Everyone will start. Tony, do we have a quorum, please?
Do you have a quorum? Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Bensan, Councilmember Runenbaum, Mayor Brechtam Young, Councilmember Cremo, all present.
Thank you. This time, would you please rise? Pastor John Sherman, our friend, is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Pastor John.
You got it. Let's pray. So, Lord God, Heavenly Father, first I want to thank you for many blessings that you have shed upon us as a nation, and then obviously us as a city. It's been my joy to watch your blessing unfold over these decades. And before we ask of anything of you, we just want to hit pause and say thank you for the blessings we've already had. So, for tonight, for my friends around this table who lead our city, would you give them the spirit of collaboration and unity? You said in your scriptures that in an abundance of councilors, there is victory. So, would you grant us victory through their collective counsel? And would you give them wisdom, which you promised that if we asked for it, you would give it, so heavenly wisdom as they decide and plan and look forward to our futures well? So, that's my prayer. I'll lift it in Jesus' name. Everybody sit.
Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pastor.
Okay, before we start, we have a couple of public comments. First one is Allison Bedore.
Yes.
You're up, young lady. Right there at the microphone.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. So, my name is Allison Bedore, and I am running for Justice of the Peace Precinct Four. And I'm having a meet and greet on January 19th, which is next Wednesday from five to seven at Drake's Yoke. So, if y'all, anyone could attend, that would be great, and I appreciate it. And my website is bedorejp4.com. You can contact me through there, to my Facebook page. And I'd appreciate anybody who can come, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is our friend Mark Povero.
Well, I'm a mayor, so I'm not going to be speaking that fast. But I know, I am Mark Povero, Mayor Hudson Oaks. I know, if you know Doyle, I love my dear friend Doyle Moss, but he's going to gavel me at two minutes and 59 seconds. Folks, I'm just really here to introduce myself and my campaign to you. I am running for Parker County Sheriff. Russ Athia and I, both are law enforcement officers. There's a brotherhood there that will never change, but the sheriff's office is an elected position. And so, I do believe you're going to have a clear choice in this election. The choices are going to be between experienced leadership and a vision. Let's talk about my experience. So, I am the only candidate in this election who's ever worked as a deputy sheriff. I was in San Juan County, New Mexico, and I worked as a deputy sheriff there. I was a neighborhood police officer for North Fort Worth. There were more cows than people up there. I worked near the Alliance Airport. So, I saw the growth firsthand, exactly what's going on here in Parker County. I was responsible for coming up with special operation details and creative ways to combat crime that came with that growth. I'm the only candidate in this election who's ever supervised men and women in the field in law enforcement. I've been a patrol sergeant, the public information officer for the police department, which does all the media. I actually formed and supervised the mental health crisis intervention team at Fort Worth Police Department, and I was chosen as the first ever sergeant over the aviation unit there. I'm a three-term city councilman. I am currently in my second term as mayor of Hudson Oaks. And despite what you see on signs out there, I am the only candidate who has ever been elected to public office. Our experience molds us into the type of leader that we will be. Let's talk about leadership. I've already shown examples of how I will lead as the next Parker County Sheriff. I was notified of a shooting in April that occurred. A man took a gun from a deputy and shot at him, and it nearly missed him. But because that man's father is a friend of the sheriff, that man was never arrested, and no charges were ever filed. I was told about it. I contacted Jeff Swain, the district attorney. We received two felony indictments in November of that year against that person. Also, the sheriff submitted a pay scale to the commissioners' court, and that pay scale gave $1 an hour to deputies, but it gave tens of thousands of dollars to command staff. I also found out about that, spoke before the commissioners' court, said that it was unacceptable. Commissioners agreed, and a new pay scale was submitted in this new budget. One more thing. We've had deaths in the jail, two of them, this past year. Nobody knows about that. I believe that we need transparency. I believe when we do things right, people need to know about it, but when we do things wrong, people need to know about it. There will be transparency when I'm Parker County Sheriff. The last thing is a vision. We have 12-minute and 24-second 911 response times. We are hemorrhaging deputies. Fifteen deputies have already left this year. Over 25% of the 98 sworn positions have left over the last two years. We've got to change the culture at the sheriff's office. I'll implement intelligence-led, community-based policing. These are computer programs where we can actually anticipate where crime is. We can put our limited resources where they need to be, when they need to be there. We're not doing that right now. That will lower response times. This is not a retirement job for me. I'll be a working sheriff in the field in uniform, answering calls for service. The command staff will also be in the field answering calls for service until we can lower response times, but I believe in leading by example. We need a regional dispatch center. As you probably already know, there are four different communication centers here in Parker County, and we need to consolidate that into one. That will prevent calls from being dropped. That will lower response times as well, and it will save Willow Park, Hudson Oaks, and other municipalities money. I have the idea for a precinct deputy. That precinct deputy will work for each precinct, will work for elected officials, for concerned citizens in liaison with me at the sheriff's office. So, if anything's going on in Willow Park that you need help with from the sheriff's office, that deputy will be at your beck and call. So, I appreciate your support. God bless you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
At this time, Mr. Grimes says we're going to table the minutes for the December 14th meeting.
I'll get to that later.
Do you need the motion, or are we good?
We're good. We'll just...
Okay. First item, an ordinance correcting ordinance number 803-19 to 803-19A, which established the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.05, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Division Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Tony.
I'll get your, I'll take care of your motions.
Mayor and council, this is simply correcting an error that we had. 803-19 was addressed and added to two different ordinances, and so we've discovered that, and this is just fixing that error.
So, the first action item is to correct the number of the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, to renumber it.
We need a motion. Do we have a motion, please, to correct the number of the ordinance?
Do we need to read the caption?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, amending ordinance 803-19A, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.05, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Division Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Sections 1.05 dot 032A, B, and C of the City of Willow Park Code of Ordinances, to provide for changes to the membership terms of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and adding place numbers and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second, please?
I think that was for item number two.
That was for item number two.
That's not the correct.
No, it's the shorter caption.
When we get to item number two, that's what I'm going to read.
Leah, saving time. Go ahead, Leah.
There you go. I don't, do I have that ordinance in?
It's, yes.
Okay, not in the what list. Thank you.
Take two.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance correcting ordinance number 803-19 to 803-19A, which established a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.05, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Division Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
We have the correct motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
To adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 803-19A, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.05, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Division Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Sections 1.05 dot 032A, B, and C of the City of Willow Park Code of Ordinances, to provide for the changes to the membership terms of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and adding places, and providing an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
All right. You have anything to add to that, Tony?
The ordinance that's in your packet is actually the previous ordinance, so the ordinance that's at your seat is the correct ordinance. So...
It doesn't have positive changes.
Yeah, it's not going to accept anything else. You're just amending the terms, beginning in January, adding place numbers for two-year terms, and changing the meeting schedule to quarter end.
Okay. We have, we've had a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, who was second? Greg?
Tyler.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider and appoint Parks Board members for places number two, four, and six. I'm proposing, or Tony, do you need to say anything?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm proposing Cory Tucker for place two, Ever Gomez for place four, and Cynthia White for place six. We have the applications. You should have them. And if there's not any other questions, or if we need discussion, or do we, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the members as suggested by the mayor.
Cory Tucker, Larry Johnson, I'm sorry, Ever Gomez, and Cynthia White. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Tony. To consider approving a contract between Parker County and the City of Willow Park for the 2022 general election. Mr. Grimes.
Yes, Parker County has historically conducted our elections, the Elections Office has. And this is the pro forma contract that they had presented to us for review. Council has, or staff has no objections to the contract. We look forward to having Parker County conduct our May 7th election.
Do we have a motion?
I move that Willow Park City Council pass and adopt a contract with the Parker County Elections Office to conduct the May 7th, 2022, general election.
Second.
Now, four and five are the... Oh, okay, the way they're ordering, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Are any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number five, to consider and act on an ordinance to order the May 7th, 2022, general election.
Yes. So, now that we've contracted with Parker County, we can actually do the ordinance that orders the municipal election. Your staff memo has a couple of dates of interest. The first date of file is January the 19th. The last date of file is February the 18th. If we have to draw for positions on the ballot, it'll be February 23rd through the 25th. That's kind of how we're going to have to organize that. First day of the early vote is the 25th of April. Last day of early votes, the third. Election day is on the 7th, and we will canvass the election at our May 10th meeting. The ordinance, the caption, I did notice a typo this morning in the caption. We do not have a flux capacitor here at City Hall, so we're not going back in time to have a May 7th, 2021 election. So, that should read May 7th, 2022.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
And you'll need to read the caption in your, if, in your motion.
I move that we approve an ordinance ordering a general municipal election to be held on May 7, 2022, for the purpose of electing council member for place number three, a council member for place number four, and a council member for place number five, designating a polling place within the municipal limits, appointing a presiding election judge, and alternate presiding election judge, establishing other procedures for the conduct of the election, providing a severability clause, providing for publication of notice, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussions or questions, please? All in favor? Thank you. City Hall update, are we going into executive session?
Not exactly, not yet. We will here in a moment. I need to put some things out for the general public.
Okay.
So, are we, y'all ready for this agenda?
Item number six, City Hall update.
Councilman Runenbaum asked staff to see about reconfiguring the existing facility for, to maximize space. Over the Christmas break, and I wish Bill was here, Bill had a medical issue this afternoon that he needs to tend to, and so we know he's watching at home. But Bill and Candy, who's obviously been out, and I'll get to that later, but they have comprised a floor plan that I think would work, but it does a couple of things that we'll need to go into Executive Four. Eventually, this facility where we're at right now would be turned into office space slash conference room. I need to revert for a second. Tomorrow morning, we are moving Municipal Court out of this building and into the Public Safety Building. And I want to thank Michelle and Carrie for working together and making this possible. What that does is it frees up that space back there so we can have additional office space. We're going to have a May election, so what I'm telling you is probably not going to happen immediately, but it will probably happen eventually. The idea is to take those two cubes right there, turn those into actual offices, and then put another two offices kind of where these TVs are. Put a wall up here, and then turn this entire area into a conference room, a, what we would call a proper conference room. If you've ever been here for a meeting of more than two or three people, we take those tables and we put them there. And it's clearly a professional environment when people want to come in and do business with the city. So, that's the idea eventually. Bill's suggestion, and I like it, is to put development together. We are looking to hire a building official. We haven't really decided on a job description or anything else. We're spending quite a bit of money with BV, who does our inspections. We feel like there's some cost savings there. I think BV served a purpose when we were just starting out, but the volume of what we're paying them, we can probably have it done in-house. The irony is, we can probably have it done more efficiently, and definitely the communication would be better between staff and the general contractors. Toni Fisher has done a great job, but when she's working with Betty, when Betty's here at the office, it's a path between her office and here, her office and here, her office and here. I'd like to keep Toni and Betty in close proximity with each other. Rose does a wonderful job as Communications Director. We need to get her into the bullpen so we can have conversations that's not readily heard in the lobby, and it's also very troublesome when they're having a conference room in here. Betty's talking with developers, or talking to somebody about a project. Me and Rose are having a conversation about whatever. That becomes troublesome as well. So, eventually, the idea is to take this space. Obviously, you could not hold a council meeting in that situation, which is the impetus for us going into an executive session. We have a couple of options available that I want to discuss with you as far as maybe leasing space, or maybe some other alternatives, but I wanted to share those with you. Between now and the May election, I think we will make do with what we have available after court moves out. The idea is, when court moves out, we'll see what kind of space we have. We may have to punch a hole in a wall and make a little doorway and stuff like that, but we have a game plan to make this thing work. We just don't know when we can do it. We don't know how much it's going to cost at this moment, and those are some things that we want to discuss with you guys. The big one's going to be, where do we hold council meetings? Where do we hold BOA? Where do we hold P and Z? Where do we hold parks? We're looking to, we, if we went full schedule, we would hold a meeting every Tuesday of the month for the year. So, you'd have parks, council, P and Z, and then BOA. And so, we have some, we have some options that I want to discuss with you guys.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
The BV contractor and the potential new position that we would create, what do we anticipate the cost savings to be to the city?
So, Bill would know that number better. I know in October, the invoice to BV was $57,000. We think that we can get a building official for the year. Without putting the job description out there, I think we can go between probably 70,000 to 80,000, 85,000 for a building official.
So, we could see some probably significant savings?
I know Bill and Candy ran the numbers before we even talked about it. It was enough, I'm trying to remember exactly the exact number. I know it was significant. It was enough to bring, to bring that in-house.
Okay. There are savings, yeah, I think that's a great thing to discuss.
Any other questions?
So, you, so the plan is to wait till after the election in May, to start all this reconfiguring?
Yes. I'm hesitant about going, I mean, we could theoretically go to somewhere else and just contact Parker County Elections Office, that we're not going to hold it here. I'm just suggesting, you know, First Baptist Church, or whatever. We, in theory, could do that. I know that puts a time crunch on them. We haven't fully vetted that location, and the May election is, you know, they'll start early voting here in about 90 days. And so, I would, it's just safer to say we'll have the elections here in this building than try to find us a separate site for the 11th hour.
But we aren't doing primary elections here.
We are not doing primary elections here. No.
Okay, anything else for Brian? Do you want to do future agenda items after executive, or now?
Let's do it now, and we'll do, I'll do my comments, too, as well, because I want to thank you.
Future agenda items.
I'm meeting with the rate consultant on Thursday, and I think we will be able to present our, his study to you guys for consideration on the 25th. Councilman Runenbaum has asked about a street maintenance fee. I want to get with Derek to walk us through the process. I want to be clear, we're not going to start the process of adopting a street maintenance fee, but similar to when we had the drainage discussion a year ago. What is it? How's it work? How's it implemented? What kind of projections do we think we'll see? And so, we'll have that discussion. Jake Weber's going to come and present the financials for the end of the December 31 period, so the first quarter, financials. And there's another one, and I can't remember what it is, but I think Leah's going to remind me of it.
For January, I don't have it, but we have the ordinances that are going through P and Z that Betty has been working on.
That was it. Yep, it was...
Yeah, that's for the February.
Yes, we're going to, is it February or January? February.
...to do the cleanup and adjust the times for appointments to the board, planning, some commissioning board adjustment.
What we're trying to do is, just as a quick aside, we have various boards and commissions with appointments that are scattered throughout the year. We're trying to unify, uniform those things. I think at one point, we were going to be appointing people in September when we were doing the budget, and it was never on anybody's mind. So, we're going to try to make all the appointments in January and start the calendar year out that way.
And that's why we did the Parks Board.
That's, yeah.
We were ready for that, with that ordinance and appointment, so...
Okay.
Any, is there anything y'all would like to see on the agenda?
So, just to, you know, it seems like I'm saying this almost every council meeting, is just, okay, so I want to make sure we're in a good position for May, where we are 100%
There's...
good with El Chico, and also our friends at Hudson Oaks, to make sure they have water. Good with El Chico, and also our friends at Hudson Oaks to make sure they have water.
It's, it's, if your ears were burning last week, there's a reason why, and we have an update. I actually have a meeting with Fort Worth tomorrow. I don't know how I want to be at that in the chamber at the same time, but I'll figure it out. But, yeah, we have a meeting with, there's going to be an update that we need to give to you guys here, and if I don't do it on the 25th, I'll be able to do it on the 11th.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
There's supply chain issues.
Of course. The business development updates will continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I planned on doing that, the reports and things like that. I want to do that at the second meeting.
That's, that's fine, just as long as they, so people know what's coming into the city. And is Derek going to give an update on wastewater treatment plant? Because last I heard was TC and Q said everything was.
We're going to have a public hearing on February the 11th. We were scheduled to have one today. They ran the ad in the Democrat and not the community news, and so we felt like if we just started all over from scratch, it would be fine. So, February the 11th, we'll have a public hearing on the wastewater treatment plant, and I think that'll be the kickoff to the permitting process.
All right.
Okay. Anything else?
Couple of comments. Most of you guys know, let everybody else know, that we've been hit with COVID here at City Hall. I've got two senior staff that have been out for the last 10 days, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with them, and we've been in contact with them daily, and I know they're doing well and they're recovering. I want to thank, obviously, everybody, but I want to give a special recognition to Michelle Gelker. Michelle found out Monday afternoon that she was going to do payroll on Tuesday morning, and she did it very, very well, and despite her best efforts, I'm thinking about permanently assigning that to her. She, no, Michelle did a great job of coming in and filling in for Candy. Tony's done a great job of, she picked up slack for the, for the agenda for last week. I want to thank you, Tony, for being Johnny on the spot. It kind of goes without saying, and I just take it for granted, we, you, have an amazing staff here at City Hall, me excluded. These people come to work every day. I haven't seen anybody complain. I have never heard, that's not my job. I've heard, let me figure out how to help you. We even got Hoffman back there, you know, paying some bills, so it's, you've got a good staff here, and that's something to be proud of. These people work together, they have lunch together, they enjoy their coffee breaks together. It's not just show up, sit at a cube, do my job, and walk out the door, and it's a really, really cool thing to see as one of those guys. So, I just want to tell everybody at City Hall, thank you for pitching in.
And I'll echo that. I edited my notes to thank Brian, Bill, Tony, and Rose, all the staff for stepping up and helping us with Candy and Crystal being out. Okay, at this time, we're going into executive session. It is anticipated that all or a portion of the discussing, discussion of the foregoing item will be conducted in closed executive session under authority of Section 551-072 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, no action will be taken in this item until the City Council reconvenes an open session. The item is deliberation regarding real property. Could we clear the council, please? Thank you.
Hey, Rose? Can you?